I have six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order pursuant Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A. Section twenty hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. If anyone wishes to record on their own, they must first notify the chair. First up, we have special permit hearings. I'd like to open that at this time for forty Limestone Road. Representing which here?
Good evening, Lead Planning Board members. My name is Richard Frazek. I'm the Executive Director for Community Television for the Southern Berkshires CTFB. We are here tonight to request a special permit construct an approximate fifty foot tall antenna next to CTFB, which is located at forty Limestone Road in Lee. Before we discuss the antenna construction, I would like to say that bringing a community radio station to Lee will benefit the residents of Lee and the other four towns we serve in so many ways. Our call letters represent Great Barrington, Sheffield, Stockbridge, Lennox, and Lee. WGSL will be a low-power FM station broadcasting on one oh seven point three FM for a five-mile radius, playing jazz and classical music along with community programs, allowing all to have a voice in what has traditionally been corporate-controlled radio. Those outside the five-mile radius will be able to stream WGSL for free online. WGSL will offer a vital platform for individuals, groups, and communities to share their stories, experiences, and perspectives in an increasingly media-rich environment. Joining me tonight via Zoom is Sean Seer, Executive Director for Pittsfield Community Television, who has entered in an agreement with WGSL to retransmit their community radio station WTBR in Pittsfield, which broadcasts various formats of music and community programming, giving listeners in the Southern Berkshire, Berkshires even more options for community radio. Also joining us tonight, I don't see him yet, should be Kurt Jackson, our tower engineer, who will be constructing the single antenna we are requesting a special permit for from the Town of Lee Planning Board. I have copies of the preliminary site drawings and our letter of intent I am sending to the five-pound select boards and that we serve, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Like to go around the room and start. Conrad?
Oh, sure. Just a few things. Supposed to be a special permit, planning board special permit application, applicable zoning code in the bylaw relates to the one ninety-nine four-point-two K from OPLI zone. It also looks like it's in here under one ninety-nine, nine-point-seven under wireless communications. Under ninety-nine point four, four-point-two K under communications, it looks like telegraph, telephone, radio, and television uses are allowed by right within the OPLI zone, subject to site plan approval. Under H in the same citation basically says that any accessory structure that uses that are customary to the preceding uses are allowed by right as well. So none of these uses, none of the uses are required special permit. It's allowed by right, subject to site plan approval. However, when you get down to under one ninety-nine, nine-point-seven, basically says a wireless communications is a special permitted use by the planning board. I guess the question is, does this relatively small power being considered as a wireless communication structure? Under, by definition, under B, it says that this wireless communication device being any antenna, apartments, wiring, or traffic used in connection with reception or transmission of electromagnetic radiation, which is attached to the structure. I guess, an FM, no, an FM radio frequency is electromagnetic radiation emitter, correct?
That would be a great question for our engineer. I assume that it is, but I don't see Kirk here as of yet. So Sean, is that something you could answer? No, we can't hear him. You're muted.
Sorry, let's try that again. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Communication, that's the number one. Yes, I believe that it would qualify, as the gentleman said, or an emitter of radio frequency energy, correct?
I don't reason I'm raising that because there's a differentiation between whether this is electromagnetic radiation or not, according to the special permit regulations. So then, under C three, there is an exception for wireless communication structures and devices used expressly for home television and radio reception. That would be except. It sounds like that's specifically for the transmission of electromagnetic radiation emissions. So I guess that's where the question comes in here is.
Do they need a special?
Do they need a special permit? Because it seems like the use is allowed by right, either as an accessory, antenna being an accessory structure, and the use being the transmission, transmission. So then, the question then comes up about the radioactive, radioactive electromagnetic radiation emission, which seems like that would subject it to the special permit.
I think it was.
That's why I'm reading it.
Isn't it, can we just take notice that FM transmitters are electromagnetic radiation emitters? I mean, FM radio is electromagnetic transmission.
So that would trigger the requirement for special permit.
Unless there's some exception in the district rules. I didn't follow what you said about the district rules.
There is an exception for for receiving, but not for the transmission of.
Oh, okay.
That's, that seems to be the differentiation.
This is a transmission tower.
This is transmission, correct. Not a, not a receiver.
So have you, have you reviewed this nine-point-seven section of the he was referring to?
I have not.
Okay, there's quite a bit in there of things that you need to discuss with us when we get to a special permit application. Have you, is this what we're, we have tonight, Mr. Chairman, is a special permit application?
It is, so.
Okay, so there are a lot of things in here about the placement of guide wires near, near boundaries, height limitations, bonding requirements for setting up the tower and for submitting a bond for decommissioning the tower, all of which, if you haven't reviewed and aren't prepared to discuss, I could well understand, you're not, you're not expected to be an expert on this very technical subject, but it might do better to postpone this until you can address the questions and then maybe file some supplemental papers on those points. There's a lot of, there's a lot in that. It's about eight pages, isn't it, Conrad?
But also through a site plan.
Because, well, we sort of have a site.
Not really. There's no dimensions on it. There's no, there's no.
I don't even know what it is. The circle's drawn, but I assume that.
The circle, I believe, is the radius for notification butters.
Oh, oh, oh. Oh, I see.
When you start in the dimensional aspects of the tower, you've got that one point two-five ratio for the height of the antenna. How, if it ever fell, does it go over to a rest, does it go over a property land, does it go over a right-of-way? I submit, I doubt it will.
No, our power lines are underground and there's no houses nearby. It will be next to our building.
If the tower fell, if it migrated only somebody's property alone, that's what would be in it do. And I don't think that's the case. And if it goes the other way towards the road, again, your height is not enough. It's going to hit your building before it hits the road. Well, I get what Peter's saying is there are certain elements here that's got to be included as part of site plan approval, as part of the special permit. And some of those things would have to be, yeah, your surveyor or engineer could have. Once reviewing this, we'd be able to be in a position to.
Very rigorous. I mean, it's almost more rigorous than any other kind of permit we ever review.
And I think a lot of that was going back to cell tower development.
It's totally written for cell towers. It's what it's written for.
Yeah.
Not, not this. But unfortunately, this falls into this category, you know, is the problem.
Yeah, because of the electromagnetic.
Yep. And our engineer does build cell towers, so I will have him review this as well. And the next time we, I'm sure all these questions can be answered. I don't know why we've seen, he could have gotten the timer off.
Okay, well, you know, if you weren't prepared to do this in detail, there's no harm done for him being absent because he was just going to have to say, I'll see you next time, anyway, even if he was here.
Thank you.
Sure. But there's one ninety-nine point seven F has design requirements. G has information about the application process that lists sixteen things, if you can believe it, that you're supposed to submit to us.
Okay.
And then a few more miscellaneous things. And then there's also a requirement that an engineer explain his opinions on certain questions. I think those are in, that's also in G, which goes on for three pages of stuff you're supposed to submit to us. So if you don't mind, I think having a continuous is probably the best course for you.
The scale of what you're asking for is minimal compared to what?
This is a tiny little antenna. We're over-regulating, but we've got to follow our law.
Yeah.
This is a freestanding tower. There's no guide wires on it.
No guide wires. It'll be mounted to a concrete platform and not attached to the building. The only wiring will come down and run into the building, but will not be attached to our building. And which section does that start with, like in?
Yeah, it's, well, our whole zoning code is section one ninety-nine of our lead code. You can look this up online on the town website. But this particular long section about antennas is nine points, it's one ninety-nine dash nine-point-seven.
It also has the indications of what the approval and the findings will be. So your engineer can submit the findings, because the findings are different than our thirteen-point-four.
Yeah.
So you would just have to be in a position to address that.
Sure. Sure, sounds great. Okay, great. Thank you for your time, and I'll hopefully we'll see you next month.
So you're requesting an extension?
Yes, please. I would be requesting an extension to research.
Hey, we will, we will put this on the agenda for next time. I but you fall under this category, sorry.
It's okay.
It's not, it's not that, it's not, this is for cell towers and this tower. We never had a FM transmitter. That's kind of cool.
Yeah, with cable TV, so this is all new for us too. Big learning curve.
Okay.
I want to say I'm happy to know that there's going to be another radio station in town playing jazz and classical music.
Well, it's going to be.
NWPBR has always been fun.
Right, right. So we're going to actually have two.
I think Sunday mornings folk, right?
That's right. Yep, eight AM Sunday mornings. In addition to a bunch of other variety of formats and music and talk.
Let me know when your book is.
Oh, no, not a chance. This guy doesn't dance. We have a lot of happy listeners here.
Good, thank you. We'll get, we'll get through this. We got a.
Two weeks. How much time do you need?
How much time? I think the next planning board meeting we could.
Okay, that's great.
Can I just raise one thing? Not being very familiar with this, I just scanned it quickly, and there's two bonds required. If we indicate anything about that, it seems to me that that's excessive for forty-five-foot power. Possibility that we might be able to waive that if it's not, it's incredibly expensive for the
Yeah.
the CTFB folks.
And bonds are just.
We can't, we can't rule on it tonight, but if you come back and you say, you know, we checked into it and it costs X and we'd rather not do it, we could then entertain your request, I think. I just wanted to mention it because it seems a little bit out of scale to what you're proposing to me.
Excellent.
It's electric, electromagnetic radiation. Boy, they catch every time.
Yeah, whoever wrote that. As Gordon said, I don't know what they did. It was before.
Well, I don't think so. I think this is pretty recent.
No, this was, this was in the late eighties, I think, early nineties they did this.
When cell towers.
That's right. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we'll now close that special permit hearing, and we will open up our next one. Meadowwood condominium, eight fifty Summer Street, Unit M twelve.
M twelve.
Yeah, and you're.
I'm Gregori Pateo.
This for you? I was told to give you this. You know what it is.
Um, and I'm here to represent Leonard and Police Shaker.
Yeah.
Owners of the unit.
Right.
And what we're proposing is modifications to the special permit.
All right. Do you have that special permit?
Yes, actually do.
All right. You see which board approved that?
Board of Select.
Uh huh.
Correct.
So tonight, we can, we can probably look over your site plan and everything. And we're going to have to schedule a special permit for the select board.
Why was it select board?
It, because it's a multi-welling facility.
It's resort.
Resort. It's a resort.
Yeah.
So that, since you're modifying that, I'm sorry. I see you hang your head, but, but this is.
Directed us over.
You would still have to, you'd still have to be here for the site plan. We have to approve that first, and then the special permit goes on to them.
Okay.
Okay, so this isn't a waste of time. We're still going to do this. We're going to look at it. It's going to be a site plan.
It's just not the last hurdle.
It's not your last, it's halfway.
Do we need to go up to CPA as well?
No, no, you're, you're modifying that special permit, so they're going to have to approve the amendment. And with any special permit we, or amendment, we get a site plan. So we're going to go over a site plan here tonight.
Right.
And then give our recommendations to them.
Here, man, somebody in the audience, somebody in the audience.
Yes, sir.
I think we were trying to mount it if we want in December fifteenth.
Yep.
Which is.
For the selectmen.
Yeah.
Yep, this is site plan, yes.
Yeah, the nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen eighty-three, the nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-seven, and two thousand twelve, and two thousand fourteen. The original one was water-sucking, all subsequent modifications. He's got to, he's got to continue that basis. Twenty-fourteen, not longer than allowed, and to be built.
Yep.
We have a, probably an unusual structure here in Lee, where some of our special permits lie here. Some of them lie with the zoning board, some of them lie with the selectmen. And I couldn't tell you, I wasn't here and I couldn't tell you how they decided it, but you happen to be in the select board category, and that's, the category has remained stable for many years. So the structure of the law at the time that you first got your permission is very likely the identical structure that we still have. So we're without power to give you final approval.
But also, you have to get it from the tiny board for site plan approval. Comcom, at least got to get it written in confirmation from them that.
Well, they're, they're if they don't get back, then there's no objection, right? Yeah.
But. Got her.
Yep.
I mean, typically when I submit locations to town, town officials are distributing in the, within the board.
Everyone has.
You know, have been distributed.
It has been distributed, oh, yeah.
So Comcom is already looking at it.
Yep.
And then do we have, you know, I know you, it's on your board, but do you know an attempt to schedule a meeting with the select board was first? Or the select board has scheduled meeting during the application?
Um, I don't think, yeah, they'll, they'll post it and.
They're kind of waiting for you to do.
Yeah.
They don't know about this being their case.
I don't say, yeah.
It's been advertised legally for the planning board, site plan, or special permit.
Yeah.
So you really have to get a new application to the board.
Yeah.
And then start that with them.
Okay.
Probably use the same fee, I would think, right?
Yeah, well, we have to pay for two newspaper.
Yeah, that's, so.
Yeah, possibly. I'm not sure if they'll waive the second fee or not, you know.
Maybe I should give you a check back.
Not yet. Talk to Chris on that one.
Um, okay, we'll have jokes.
Um, all right, let's do this. Get the site plan.
Yes, so.
Go, basically same presentation.
Right, right. So we have Unit M twelve built second, yes, sold after two thousand fourteen. This was issued for that. The special permit was issued for four thousand four hundred square foot unit. Um, and so what we're proposing is a thousand square foot addition to an existing structure that is two hundred and, two hundred and two, two hundred, two hun- two thousand two hundred nineteen square feet. And there's an additional porch, which is four hundred eighty-one square feet. Um, so together, the existing conditions are twenty-seven hundred square feet. I'm proposing a thousand square foot addition that still keeps this underneath. Uh, they originally allowed four thousand four hundred square foot total property. Um, so as you can see in the presentation I submitted, I just go through this. Um, you know, there's a locust condition. It's a part of Meadowwood condominium. And part of that property, so that we'll close up. That's where the Unit M twelve has what needed.
Can you? What are these lines that you have through here?
They're internal divisions that surveyor did for the Meadowwood. So I wouldn't, he will be able to tell you exactly what they are. I don't know.
The one I had, it says thirty feet, thirty-five.
Thirty-five feet. Is it something that we discussed with David Carver, who's present here? He's a man who checked the condominium, and he said as long as we're within that thirty-five-foot area around.
From the.
From the face, from the place of the existing structure, from the garage of existing structure.
I think he's just showing that there's nothing there.
Yeah, there's, you know, the closest building is right here, and the other one closest building is on the other side of the building altogether. So there's a two closest buildings, and then the rest is sort of further back out there.
So it was a thirty-five foot, was that part of the original division?
No, no, that's just something that David felt will be.
I could explain it.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
There were a lot of lines on a survey. The surveys go all the way back into nineteen seventies, while it was originally proposed, developed, and after the box, all over the whole space. Because it's all one parcel now. Those lines still exist, but they have no legal meaning within our condominium except for the ponds and lakeside, which have their own land. Uh, some of the lines on our survey are internal lines, usings between parties or setbacks and huge, that's huge shade, but they don't have any legal authority, you know, as far as the cost is concerned. So the line they were printing, the lines that we put on a map to protect. We created our own no-bill zone, basically. That may be what we look at on some of our surveys.
So you have one here. Is the the actual parcel. Um, and then these are, these are the internal lines.
Yeah. Yeah, these lines, these lines, these lines no longer have any meaning.
Okay.
These were, these go way, way back to the original developers in the, in the eighties. But the Forsyth Land, who we use to update the survey all the time, he has chosen just to leave those for historical reference.
So if this special permit is granted and the addition is built, the closest building to the new addition would be hundreds of feet away from the, from the addition, is that right?
Yes, the closest would be the manor house, which we renovated.
Hundreds of feet.
Oh, many, about five hundred, I guess, about four to five hundred feet away.
We were a little thrown off when we saw the thirty-five-foot distance of the map and all these picture lines.
The entire parcel is, is two hundred and twenty acres altogether. And so like I said, these are all internal lines that have no significance any longer.
Thank you.
So the, the goal of addition is to publish a master primary bedroom suite that's on the same level as the rest of the main floor of the building. Um, and that's, that's all it is. It's a bedroom, bathroom, and closet, and laundry room, and the hallway connecting it to the main house. So this, this drawing shows that just existing condition is out there addition. Then there's a progress of existing condition. Um, it's the building the way it is right now. And then foundation plan. Uh, most of the building has a basement, but except for the garage and the deck. Um, and the idea is that the basement of the addition will tie in the basement of the existing structure. Um, this is the main level of the addition, a close-up plan.
And you're saying with that, under the forty-four hundred?
Yeah. Yeah, thirty-seven hundred is perfect, total, including the deck, which is basically open.
So why does it need a special permit then?
He's modifying it. Modifying.
Modifying the existing structure.
From the last set of plans.
Yeah. Yeah, actually.
The many, the many modifications prior, dating back to nineteen seventy.
Technically, still within the original, not the original, but that most recent modification related.
Was the building, two thousand fourteen, the most recent was the building.
My original special permit.
Wait, seventy-eight.
And then something been modified.
Oh, yeah.
What, six times, yeah.
Did you see the name on the one?
No.
Sarah. I did, yeah. CTA, Creative Building Solutions. Ain't heard plenty. He's always doing unique ones.
There's no change in use here. This is for, the people who are living there.
That's right. Present here.
It's not an ADU accessory dwelling.
No, no, it's must, it's a primary bedroom for the owners of the building. Okay. Was the goal to just create one level living. And but nightclub, the building is kind of. It's out there.
So if it's just a site plan, you know, it's quite limited. We don't have to make five big finals.
No.
Landscape, traffic flow, and lighting perhaps.
Yeah, there's a very little outside lighting and it's all downcast.
Yeah. I don't see a lot of issues with the site.
Anyone else? No? Any motions out there?
I'll lose that, somebody's board. Prove the site plan.
Use that date?
Yeah, as, as submitted somewhere around here. Oh, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. And what, what should I say about the selectmen? This is, this is advice to the selectmen, so we can't really approve.
Issues.
Yeah.
Your recommendation.
Yeah, recommendation is.
Recommendation that the site plan be approved. And that's a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
And that the, this board sees no issues to raise or to change.
Right.
Is that clear enough? I think they said it three different ways.
There are second. What's the date is July twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
July twenty-nine.
Well, it says July twenty-six, right underneath the compass those.
Left hand side of that.
Where's the twenty-ninth date?
Twenty-six. Revision. Revision law.
Special permit.
Okay, okay. So July twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Okay.
And the name of the firm?
I, I don't understand what the special permit seven twenty-nine twenty-four means. Is that a number that you put on or that the town?
Do you need the date?
It's a date, it's a date of the original.
The latest revision.
So we should disregard the part that's.
Well, this is, this is, this is related to this image. It's, it's about the locust map. It's a date when I obtained the local, locust map on the J S.
So. To represent, of course, with art forms architecture. Yeah. That was listed in the motion.
Well, it was filed by client, the owners, the location was filed, filed and signed by owners. I'm representing them.
We're citing or referencing.
Right.
Site planets to be. We're citing or referencing the site planets to be a
By the right.
Form of the victim plan of that, of that date.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so to clarify the motion, and motion relates to site plan submitted on behalf of the Shaper, S C H A P E R, residents by Gregori, G R I G O R I, Fatayev, F A T E Y E V. Uh, on behalf of Art Forms Architecture, with a special permit date of July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four.
Perfect. Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Day four seconds, any further discussion going around the room, Conrad?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Up Donovan, I. Site plan is approved for, approved for recommendation.
Look.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. That ends our uh special permit part. Um, public hearing, public comment, sorry, public comment. Come on up. What do you have going on tonight, Kathy?
More stuff about the Lee Youth Commission, and I always thank you for letting me have a voice, because I think it's really important for the town to know what we're doing, and all our praising us. So first of all, I want to say thank you to the D P W, because today there was a delivery of our sixty foot and a hundred foot liner for our ice rink once we get into winter, so I know that not only did they have to have a delivery near the D P W, but they're also gonna have to move it once they move to one oh two, and then they're gonna have to move it when we need it. So I'm very grateful for the D P W to help us with that, because we certainly can't lift that. And then the other thing is, I wanted to ask you about a sign for the bachi court. We finally, um, years ago, we put up a bachi court because people asked for it, so the bachi court is located between the pavilion and the skateboard park, okay, it's seventy two feet by no, seventy six feet by twelve feet. Um, it's a regulation bachi court, um, we finally put the bachi balls out there today throughout these years, because people said, don't worry about getting bachi balls, we all have our own sets, so they didn't worry about it, except our commission said, you know what, we need to put some out there, and I had purchased them on behalf of us um, a couple of years ago, so today we put them out. Um, but I need to know if we can put up a sign that I know that we can put up signs on the fence, but I don't know if we could put like a, like a stake in the ground and put up something this, kind of this size that tells the rules of how to play bachi.
Within, right, like right next to the court, you think?
Yes.
There's an exemption for municipal signs.
Yeah.
So we would be all right, I didn't wanna do anything without um getting mission to do that.
Are they illuminated?
No, it's not.
If it's gonna be illuminated, that's a different story.
They can bring their own flashlights. But I just wanted to make sure.
CBS. Legal through there. You could. Uh, yeah. So anyway, um, yeah, you're municipal for one. It's informational. So I think you pretty much have the trifecta of exemptions there.
So we just put a little snake up there and staple it.
Yeah.
So people can read it, like new people, because there's people that don't know how to play bachi, yes, me included, um, so uh you know, that would be good to uh know how to play it, if people wanted to go down there.
How are you keeping the, the bachi balls around?
Hmm, well, right now, they're just placed there.
Yeah.
And if they disappear, well, I have another set that I can put in here. Just keep going to a store and buying more bachi balls, I guess, I don't know.
Boom to the ground.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a plan for that, we're just very hopeful that they stay around, of course, you know, we do have four cameras down there.
Yeah.
And one of the cameras is focused on the bachi ball court and the skateboard.
I bet you I bet you anything, there's, there's ways that, that somebody has an app or something that they could um, give their information, and then you, it would be an auto-generated reply code. Right after their name, they'd have a code to get into, stay a lockbox.
Yeah.
That would change.
Yes.
Right?
Oh, yeah.
There's gotta be something like that for, because I see these all over the place.
Yeah.
And, and you know, they're not, they're probably get stolen all the time, so.
Oh, yeah, well, we'll check into that, so.
Yeah, and don't worry.
You could just email me.
I, I have no, no, you get to do the research.
But just give me the name, do you want me to write it down, so I don't forget?
She talked to Chris, make sure we have bachi ball insurance.
Protection, I know.
Right here.
You get bachi ball insurance?
I would, I, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the town, but I would assume if it's owned by the town, the town has lots of has the permission to have a bachi. See how, how contested it can get up to the Italian American, yeah, right?
You know, well, we have basketballs out there too.
Yeah. And they're not disappearing?
The other day though, somebody took one of our pickleball nets, racked it out of the tennis court area, put it in front of the back of the basketball court. We have no clue why that was done, we just knew we saw it, and we had to move it back where it belonged inside the tennis area. So.
In the wrong direction, this will catch it maybe.
Maybe, I don't know, ingenuity, what can I say, thank you so much, thank you.
All right, folks, um, I just left this um presidential zoning discussion on here, kind of a carryover from last week, I, I think we were kind of putting most of that on hold until our planners start.
Hmm.
Um, however, there's a few things, in your spare time in your board, I started trying to read through. But state passed a whole bunch of legislation for housing, part of it is A D Us are now by right.
Mm hmm.
But if you read it, it's not totally by right, we're still, the towns are still allowed to put restrictions and conditions on them, so basically, we're, we're ahead of the game now.
Okay, you think?
I think so, I don't think we're gonna have to scrap that one that we.
Was there uh so- something about, about nine hundred square feet, will that be an issue? Uh, one of the things I saw today.
It did, I did see, um, they said that you're allowed to put size restrictions on it.
Yeah, I thought it was like you're allowed by to nine hundred.
Oh.
Nine hundred square feet, and then if it wasn't, I thought it kind of went.
Okay, I'm like, I'm gonna, let's, I'm gonna try to read it, find it and, and read it, I started going through that, that whole bill, and that was a little much.
Yeah.
I didn't get to the.
Oh, I just got little blips of headlines.
That's all I'm finding too, yeah, I'm like, um, and I would wanna, I wanna get your guys' opinion, um, we got contacted by a reporter give comment about the A D Us, and I can not call them back, I can call them back, um, you guys tell me.
I think you're the spokesman for the board, I think you've called back.
Okay. All right, we'll do.
I know.
All right.
We have still restrict S T Rs in A D Us?
It looked, yes, it did say you can do that, yeah.
Good.
And how many, how many other curiosity have registered with the council?
I don't think anyone has, because it's a, I think in our bylaws, said you had to register first of the year, per se.
You know, uh, I had a conversation with someone at instruct, was very knowledgeable about this, and she said that there is really financial problem, A D Us, that the banks are reluctant to give mortgages for the construction of A D. I'm not sure that I really remember all the details, but it had to do with what if, remember that situation where the owner moves to the A D U and uh, I think it had to do with sort of ambiguity around who's living where, making, somehow making the banks reluctant to issue any mortgages, so could be that we've fixed one part of the problem, but there's another bigger problem that we never even saw. Uh, something we should probably look into.
How could we, um, we can't do much with the financing, though.
No, I, not that I can think of, yeah.
Well, then, I mean, if you've got a mortgage on the A D U on the property with the original house, uh, when they spoke, went into default. Uh, does the bank come after the total piece of property?
Yes, sure.
So, I, I don't, I really don't understand what the bank's problem.
I think where the problem would be is if you're financed on still newly, say newly financed eighty percent on your house, and you wanna put up an A D U. So you're gonna.
You're going over the maximum.
Probably.
Yeah.
There is, but you should be able to add the
Value.
Value of the A D U, hundred of the value of the house in the dirt. It's still keep it under eighty percent, that would be the that would be the trap.
But it's always be eighty percent of what?
It'll be a, a, twenty percent, uh, lower than value. So as long as the appraisal value of the house, every house in the dirt, plus the value of the A D U as completed, I'm gonna issue those and take, get a financial eighty percent of the total, but they just have to justify it by an appraisal. It seems like that.
Right, but that.
A network.
Yeah, well, it's how mortgages go, though, meaning then you're not, then you're mortgaging a.
An investment property, yes, and that, that'll, that'll change the metric.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I said, what makes my job easier is that when you get, when you look at it, as far as insurance goes, if you have an A D U or an S T R, and you have no, and there's a law, well, you're gonna have a problem, and your mortgage company might have a problem, the insurance company doesn't pay the law.
That's probably wrong.
So if you're, if you're not being honest in telling your agent that you have an Airbnb and your previous triple, well, there's, there's a reason for that, so uh hopefully, as.
Because eighty, eighty is are just greater risk generally.
Of course they are, you know, you have more, let's say it's an elderly apartment, you have more potential people visiting the apartment. You know, maybe they have a, a visiting nurse that comes in and out, and maybe she slips and falls going and stuff. Well, you create more traffic. With more traffic, it becomes more risk, it's a whole neat second well. Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a conversation we have at the office all the time. We, you know, and how do we, how do we tell people that they should do it, because insurance companies will pay for that first loss potentially, but after that.
And imagine.
Most people don't wanna do that.
I can just imagine your conversations at work.
It's, it, they're not.
It's so different.
They're not, they're not.
World, such a different world.
You have to, you have to be honest, and if you're not honest, well, you could run into a problem, and that's what we have to tell them. Sure, we have you insured properly, it's, it's record, it's never done.
Mm hmm.
Uh, and things sometimes, you know, slip through the cracks or anything.
Yours, not to have, let that happen.
I, you, you know, I'm not gonna be a, a police officer and knock on doors and say, hey, I need to see, no, no, but you know.
Yeah.
Everybody knows what, whether or not their, their insurance product is, is right, and if they're not sure, they should call their agent, that's all I can say.
The fools that get put up in the trampolines in the backyards.
We see them all, you know, you only get caught when the insurance company sends on an inspector, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, you don't have a dog, then you have a pit bull, right? You don't smoke, but you do, so.
I don't know. You never have a mixed breed that's part of it, well, never.
No.
Never, they'll, they'll drop you right away.
Oh, boy.
Yep, okay, um, and I believe our, I have not heard any different, I believe our town planner is gonna be starting in a week or so, here today.
Fabulous.
Fabulous. Presidential zoning discussion, what else can we fit in there?
Minutes.
Oh, yeah, why don't I almost get minutes? I always jump over the minutes.
I know.
I'm sorry. All right.
Move approval.
Okay.
Here we go.
That's easy.
Second.
Second. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all around the room, Conrad?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Dave?
I'm.
Peter?
Hi.
Up Donovan, I. Thank you.
Yay.
Yeah. You know, put that in bold next time.
We won't let you forget it.
Okay, um.
You don't have any other applications to move in?
I've heard of anything, I know the emergency services building is progressing.
Uh, I looked through the submittals.
Yeah. Oh, you bring, you bring the words to my, my was in here.
Oh.
No, some people search us the recommendation first, then they all get rejected, and you start them all over.
Whatever happened to clerk of the works, this is same job.
Who's, who's, well, the architect and engineers will be handling some bills, right?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
What are you guys talking about? The the new municipal garage, oh, they're looking for a clerk of the works, I see, yeah. Uh, they have a big title for it, uh, right now, heavily lean towards stock bridge contingent. Who's the one that you?
Oh. Okay.
Uh, but still, it's a lot of money. For what? I mean, when I read through it, whenever it popped out, it said they keep track of the weather, and they keep track of the people that were on site, uh, what?
Are they taking applications, or what house is working?
Well, they're taking applications now. But it's, it must be these people know more, the, the retired, uh, contractors or construction workers on work. So they've created business now to do just that.
Hmm.
They think they built a school with Bob Boynton, it's a.
Yeah, I think he was.
He was the ma- he's a mason, was a mason. So I mean, it's, it's a lot of money that we're spending for an age old job that any retired, any, you, you're the only one that looks like a requirement is a construction license.
Got that?
No, I gave it up.
I'm, I'm just trying to think it, if private jobs that we have position like that, and we, we really have, you see, and they're the ones that are.
Yeah, project manager.
Yeah, project, they're project managers, that's it.
That's terrible.
But I think municipal has
Yes.
Done the clerk of the works, and when you say it's just a token position.
Exactly.
Are they required by law because of municipal?
I think they are. They were.
As long as you take proper notes, uh, you have to date your notes. Who's there, how many personnel, see? Uh, electrician was there with twenty five electricians, uh, what they accomplished that day? They worked on conduit, did they pull wires, did they? It's just what's going on on the site. It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
It's a state law, you think?
It is, I do.
Probably.
It wasn't even real quick school, and we did the school. It wasn't so long then.
There's a long history of municipalities having money and walk out the door.
Right.
And maybe that's a defensive mechanism that's appropriate, perhaps, even though it's expensive. Maybe it's, uh, it's a way to reduce the risk of, you know, paying for things you don't get.
Well. And my discussion out of that, we have one of those, and that's the ambulance.
It's what?
The ambulance garage.
Oh, yeah.
The newest silver donor, it's gonna hit the demo ball.
Yep.
Oh, I know.
So, so uh, to change gears here a little bit, at the last meeting, Peter, you asked curious about the pile of dirt.
Yeah.
You obviously saw them pull the black tarps over, right?
Well, there's different piles.
So there's, I'm talking about the pile.
There's a new pile with the tarp over it, iron.
Right.
I was talking about the old pile with the concrete giants, chunks in it.
Okay, cuz I, I saw some activity over there, and I was like, wow, I was like, they're just gonna put a big tarp over it, and how about we spray paint those tires? Okay, cuz I, I saw some activity over there and I was like, wow, I was like, they're just gonna put a big tarp over it, how about we spray paint those tires orange?
That's not a good sign.
Yeah, but that.
That's why. Like, feeling what they're doing?
Yeah.
He did, he didn't say it. They're leaving that mound alone until they actually get ready. It's uncontaminated, why have the many. Building, it's gonna replace where the houses was.
Well, I do have a question for.
Yeah, but it was not concrete, but, uh, gravel. Oh, I've been that happening before, I just saw it. Um, I'm not sure why, whether they got.
Well, I saw like the tarts, I go, wow. And you can make that.
Like it says, it's usually some sort of contaminant.
Roll.
Yeah.